We have one.
Yeah, we have one and that will be under new business. I guess it at the time but it's assigning a new MBU board member to serve on the SU board.
Alright, like you said, we will deal with that later but I guess it's a Franklin member that's going to be getting off the SU board so typically it doesn't have to be a Franklin member but we're gonna look to and give first choice to Franklin members if they would like to be on the SU board and then if there's no interest there we'll go on to others but just think about it until we get there. Public comments? Is there any public comment at this point? Jay?
I'd like to ask the members of the board, how many of you have actually seen the latest rankings that have been coming? That just came out recently.
For the schools?
School rankings, if you see them. And what were your impressions?
As expressed on BPR, they weren't quite where we were interested in being.
I asked the chair to share this information. What you see here is the rankings for high schools. 76 in the state, that's your 9 through 12 grade. And this is your 7 through 8, 7th and 8th grade middle school. This is where you're ranked.
55th out of 56.
93 out of 105.
30 out of 100, this. So there's room for improvement.
Well, you know, this is not the first time I've come in here and made an issue about student performance and it's really concerning me now as a grandfather of five grandchildren who are going to be coming to the school by some point in time. Last October 10th, we had a principal who put an editorial in the paper saying how things were improving and at U the test scores were on the way up and as you can see, the high schools dropped seven positions and the middle schools dropped three positions from last year. Again, he made comments in the annual report in March, does that, 7, 2017, do the same effect? And I'm sorry to tell you but the latest SBACK test results don't reflect that. Out of 56 high schools in the state of Vermont, MBU is ranked 56, I mean 55 out of 56. That's shocking. It seems like there's a new priority that needs to be put at the top of the shelf.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's really an opportunity for a lot of discussion there.
How long have these results been out?
They just came out.
Who are they from?
Pardon?
Who are they from?
Uh, this is from Measured Progress through the Agency of Ed. These are the SBACK scores and this is part of what the presentation will be tonight.
And they're down across the state.
I'm sorry but, you know, I've been around long enough to know the history. 2001, the state appointed Wendy Hubby because we were in trouble. 2008, the state threatened to seize control of the school because we were in trouble then. And now here we are in 2017, we're ranked second to the bottom. It's shocking.
So is our multi-working on this? Is this something you guys are working on?
We've got a full presentation for you at the point in the agenda and we'll talk about all the things that we're working on.
Alright. Thank you very much, Jay. Alright, what was next on our agenda? Four minutes, four minutes. Alright, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the August 17 meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard.
Second.
Do you have some changes?
Yeah, as amended. I talked to Bree Wood, I spoke to her. Have you talked to her?
Dennis, did you have some?
I had a couple things, so.
Maybe the same thing.
We had a motion by Richard, he's talking about Greg, so now we'll have some discussion. I did notice under the tractor, you don't have one in front of you.
I've got them up the other way.
Okay. Under the report on tractor bid award and it was stated that the bid was for four years for $10,800. I wish that was the total bid but that was not the total bid.
For year one payment?
And that, I'm not even sure if that was year one payment but that was the money that was allocated from last year's budget to go towards a replacement of the tractor. So I don't, I'm sure I do have the number, I think you've got that number written.
I don't have it right here but that is what was allocated from tractor for annual payment.
Okay, that was the annual payment then, okay.
Isn't there a mistake too? But didn't Paul say that he was gonna put the gang mower in at the Funnier's auction, not the tractor?
When I read that, I.
Because Paul talked about the gang mower, because he said he was gonna keep the tractor for a spare for salt.
Right, the old John Deere and so what we're gonna do is try to sell the gang mowers outright and then if they don't.
See, it's less wrong out there than it's not the tractor. If it's not the tractor, it's the gang mower.
Yes.
Was that one that you had talked, Greg?
No, that wasn't, I missed that. But there was one at the end that wasn't her responsibility but I've asked before when we come out of executive session that, no action or no action.
If they win, probably they'll win with that information.
If we didn't have any action, it should be so stated if there was action taken.
And it's no action.
And there was no action.
There was action.
I thought there was action.
I can't remember. There wasn't much.
Alright, I can show you what that action was.
It wasn't accepting the resignation, was it?
No, it was a contract issue. Motion was to contract with Becky Hart as an employee of MBU. Moved by Greg, seconded by Don, and voted 5-0. And adjournment was at 9:55.
Perfect. Are there any other comments or questions on the minutes? Alright, hearing none. All favor of the motion to accept the minutes of August 17th as amended, 75 as aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Now it's how the motion carries. So it's 7-0, I believe. Alright. Now we have the presentation.
Oh, did we add Jen Libby and Joanne to the attendees for August 17th? That was one of the notes that I was making.
Oh, okay.
So if you want to add, Jen is awful hard inside. Just put down Jen Libby and Joanne, maybe last names. Cause they were here. Welcome, Jay. Hi, Dan and Jen.
Alright, so that presentation is under principals.
I think they'll identify.
Alright, alright. I see Boys and Girls State Governors Institute so I suspect that'd be over in your court to discuss.
We can ask them to come over, they're smiling with a couple of photographs, I think. We can certainly go grab them. You guys would like to come over? Come on down. All of you?
Probably on this side if we can. Do we have enough chairs? Actually, if you want to drag some chairs over from that side so that we can all have something to sit on. See, that way the camera can capture you all.
This would be a lady booster.
That's right. I told them all when we came in that they each had 10-minute speech and they blanched a little bit. Wasn't exactly true.
Okay, my name is Samantha Freeman.
I'm Nayima. So we attended the camp, GIA, it's Governors Institute of the Arts, it's part of GIV. We were there for two weeks and once we got there, we got to choose our classes that we wanted to take. We could have two per day and mine were experimental filmmaking and long-form improv comedy.
My classes were abstract painting, acrylic, and I also took a clowning class. It's like acting but you learn how to be a clown.
In between the day, we have workshops that can be run by advisors or staff or anybody really, even students. And it's basically a time where like sometimes people would have a reading workshop where you can just go and read or painting nails or stone carving. It's really fun and it really gave an opportunity for kids to speak up and really like, I don't know, find their voice and they could be a leader for that short period of time.
Yeah, adding on to what she said, you can like really like show your passions and stuff through the workshops. I led one at 7:00 AM. I did a yoga workshop and I didn't have many people that came but it was still a cool experience.
Well, GIA was really special to me because it's not only faculty and everyone that makes it special but the people are, it was really touching to me because when you go there, when you're not just a student, it's really hard to find people that you get along with. And when I went there, it was like, it was a whole new world and I got there and I loved everybody, we were all, it was really, really fun and I don't know, it's like a big family. Like you find the people you were looking for.
It affected me a lot, I would almost say that it like changed my life kind of because it really like showed me how to be myself around anyone. Like the first day, I got up there and I just stood on a chair and I was like, when I say gummy worms, or when I say gummy, you say worms and then the whole entire crowd did it with me and it was so special. Yeah, and I like, I've been contemplating like what I want to do with my life but it really like gave me a path, direction.
Yeah, I haven't really been knowing what I wanted to do. I wanted to go to school for biology but this camp really opened up my horizons and now I'm considering teaching. I don't know what for but maybe math but it definitely made me, gave me a lot of leadership skills going to this camp.
True. And I would totally recommend it for any other students.
Definitely.
Like underclassmen and stuff.
Do you take questions?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Did it cost you anything to go there?
No.
Uh, no.
Any Governors Institute program, the school pays for it. So that was really awesome.
Yeah.
I personally, I feel like couldn't not have afforded that and I'm really thankful that all the sponsors and people like that donate to the camp were able to fund it.
I'm betting you're just as influential here so if you say gummy, I bet we can say it. You wanna try it?
Do it. I would but I'm tired.
Was there a selection process? To get in or was it?
Yeah, we had to fill out essays and just like a lot of forms and stuff, yeah. But it was all online so it made it really easy.
It was basically just asking us questions about like, why do you think we should be in GIA or, it's basically just questions about the arts and like how we qualify but yeah.
And did you find out about it from the counseling department or?
My sister did it and she found it from Mr. Blackburn, she found out about it about Mr. Blackburn.
Yeah, Mr. Blackburn told me about it too.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Nay Yates and I went to Governors Institute of Vermont for engineering. I learned about this through my careers class. We had someone come in and talk to us my sophomore year and I just thought it was really interesting. I've wanted to be an engineer since around middle school. I want to go for biomedical engineering and work with prosthetics eventually. So I signed up sophomore year not really knowing what I wanted to do and I signed up for biomedical engineering, the strand, because the way the engineering one works is you go and you get a strand and then in your strand you get groups. Like there's rocketry, there's biomedical, there's environmental, there's different kinds that you can get. So the first time I signed up for biomedical engineering and I got there and I had an environmental tag. So the, what happened was the biomedical leader, the strand leader, something happened a couple weeks before where she couldn't attend so I got put in environmental, which it still was a great experience. What we did that year was we made water filters, we made prototypes and then we made variations for the prototypes. Then we made giant water filters at the end that were about eight feet tall, I think, and we filtered water, we were testing for clarity. I think my group got the highest out of that year. So that was pretty exciting. So that year I did make a lot of friends too. I made friends from South Burlington, Rutland that I do still keep in contact with, which was really nice. So like when I play them in sports or go to their school, it's nice to go see them. So this last summer, or last school year, I was getting, got to thinking, I was like, I do want to be a biomedical engineer so I should apply again so if I can get into the biomedical strand. So I did apply and this year I was able to get into the biomedical strand. So I got there this summer and our project was about lights. We were given a prompt where we had to make a light for a third world country, given a battery pack, five feet of LED lights, breadboards, switches, solar panels, wires and like everyday things like plastic, containers, duct tape, anything. And my group made a light with three switches and we got it to work pretty efficiently with markers, we had them coiled up. So this year I got really close with a group of girls from Harwood that was there and I still talk to them almost every day and when my field hockey team played Harwood, I still talk to them. So the environment there is just, it's really nice just because not a lot of people from MBU do want to do engineering. So like it's nice to just go and be with people like Nayima and Sammy said that want to do something and strive to do something that you want to do with your life. So it's just really nice to be in that environment, it was really fun. So thank you. Does anyone have questions?
So I'm in Berkeley, I chose to do the Mathematical Sciences Institute through Governors Institute and this took place at UVM directly on their campus, right near the athletic track, for a week earlier in the summer. From the moment I walked through the doors leading into University Heights, the dorm building, to exiting the same doors a week later, I was greeted only with kindness. Throughout my week of new experiences, I had 12 classes ranging from one to four days and some non-math activities thrown in there like visiting the lake, there's an ice cream social. While in the classes, I was introduced to numerous activities that I took, feed version also, in a composition book threaded by the program. After leaving UVM, I spent a percentage of my summer on the family computer studying the topics that I had just then learned about. If I were to summarize my GIV experiences with two points, it would be definitely kindness, they're very welcoming in that area and learning how much I did learn here. The 12, well, I'm not gonna list all 12 of them but the one that I had the most interest in was Chaos, Fractals, and Prediction because for those who remember, my science fair project last year had to do with fractals and so that was the only four-day one, so that was exciting. But then there were things that I knew nothing about, like the lady tasting tea. It had to do with. Statistics. And that's not something I've gotten to yet in the math classes and so that was good to go through. And these were all 12 or 11 classes were taught by UVM professors or guest speakers. And yeah, I ended up showing my notes to my current math teacher at the school, Mr. Hogan, and where I had difficulty understanding a heck of a lot of the stuff they were saying, he said, they were just professors having fun. Yeah. It was an experience. Yep, I didn't prepare a heck of a lot to say, but questions?
Hi, I'm Rachel Duttony.
I'm Samantha McInnes.
I'm Emily Bordo.
I'm Sally Bang. And so in like spring of junior year, we were selected, the four of us were selected by the faculty to attend the American Auxiliary Girls State and there was, we had to fill out an application and write a short little essay and it was, and then we had to get interviewed by the people at the auxiliary.
So Girls State is basically a mock government and the boys, I don't know if they did the same thing but this is just a group of Vermont girls from all over the state. We're split up into certain towns. There are four different towns, I was from McKenzie.
I was from Osborne.
I'm from Jones.
And so we basically do mock government. We ran for, people ran for governor, lieutenant governor, secretary and so on and we were also split up into the House Representatives and Senate and we were able to practice what they do in the actual house and what they do in the actual senate. We ran through different bills and it was just an all-around great experience.
While we were away for the week at Girls State, we had a day where we went to the state house, actually we watched them in session, well, sort of. And we split up to our House Representatives and Senates and were able to watch what they do.
We also got to meet the governor and talk to the lieutenant governor, which was really cool. And I think our best, like the best part of it was the friendships that we made. We still talk to, I know, we all talk to the girls that we met and it was nice, like people from other places said that we met people that had the same interests as us and it was pretty cool to keep in contact with people from all, all from Vermont that like we probably wouldn't have met.
And it was nice because it was a big group of girls, one of the largest, I think, fitness. And because we're all leaders from all different parts of the school so it's interesting to see how every one of us leads differently in our own communities. Do you guys have any questions?
So question, do they still have a dance between Boys State and Girls State?
No.
Funny thing you do.
Yeah, that's completely separate.
Where was Girls State this year?
Vermont Tech College of Genderism. And this is what we wore. Yeah, we were sitting everywhere. We wore every day. We thought two of them. Stuck every day. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
My name is Sean Burke.
And I'm Sam Boucha.
We went to Boys State. It's something where, just like Girls State, we made governments and we're split into towns and did a lot of stuff like that and really just learned about government and got to meet a bunch of new people. And one of my favorite parts is we played all kinds of different sports, athletes from different schools and different parts of the state that I'd never been able to meet before and I played most of them in different kinds of schools like hockey and football and just met a bunch of them.
Yeah, I think one thing I really liked about Boys State was the mock elections and just learning a lot about the local government and it was very informative and I would recommend it to anyone. I definitely learned a lot, brought home a lot from what I learned there. And yeah, the sports were very fun. Everyone there was really smart and I learned, I learned a lot.
We also went to the state house but they weren't in session when we were there so we went, we did split up like they did but we did, we talked about bills and we went down into the floor and met the governor and the house, the speaker of the house and they gave us speeches and talked to us and ended up asking questions and just had a day learning about how everything goes there.
Question for both Boys State and Girls State. Where did the funding come from for you all to attend?
The American Legion Auxiliary came for two of us at the school.
Yeah, we're at the American Legion.
We're in the school.
In the school.
Anybody interested in being a politician now?
It definitely made me more like interested in that because before I went in knowing nothing but I definitely liked to get into it when I, I think it'd be cool.
Thank you. I think so, nice round of applause.
As much firm as the superintendent's report.
I would say, talking about Boys State and Girls State in particular, the finances for Boys State and Girls State are largely business sponsorships exclusively to Boys State and for Girls State, we've been very fortunate for the last six years that the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 60 over in Elbert has sponsored two of the four girls who attend and that's allowed us to increase their representation and participation. So we're very fortunate and very thankful to have them as big sponsors.
So I guess we got the presentation from SBACK. Can we plug in? Why don't you come, so right here, we'll give it to Steve here.
Classic teacher move that I shouldn't have done, maybe I head out first but we'll go through the results but also some of the responses that we're taking. I'll give a brief overview of the test and then I'll talk about some of the changes that came out in late, late August this year that will impact our approach going forward. So if you are not familiar with the SBACK testing system, this is the third year that we've participated in SBACK testing. SBACK stands for Smarter Balance Assessments.
Contortion.
Contortion, thank you. The tests were administered in April and May, it's a large testing window, it begins the end of March and extends throughout the school year to the end of June. And we tested last year's grade 7, 8, and 11, so this year's 8th, 9th, and 12th graders. Students that, they take the test on a computer and it's through a specific browser. So testing on a computer was new to us three years ago, they're getting better at it, they are getting more familiar with how it works. And the SBACK assessment is of the Common Core standards in math and language arts. The language arts test reports out on reading, writing, listening, and research. And the math test reports out on concepts and procedures, problem solving, modeling, data analysis, communicating reasoning. The test, there are two tests and each test is broken into two parts. Each, the math test, there's a performance task where they're given a lot of information and a larger problem that they need to solve using the different pieces of information such as data table and models and drawing some diagrams, things like that. They're given about an hour, an hour and a half to perform that task. The computer adaptive test is. The computer adaptive test is about 40 questions. And the computer adaptive part means that the rigor of the test changes based on how the student is doing. So, the first question is a grade level appropriate question. If the student is doing well, then the test will adapt up to two levels above grade level. And if the student is struggling, the test will adapt to two levels below grade level. And so, this allows us to get a better idea of where the student is relative to grade level standard. The English test works the same way. The performance task has three or four large pieces of text, three or four pages each, I would say, that they have to read, nonfiction text. And then they have to respond with a longer essay to a question. And usually the question and stimuli that they're reading is science or social studies based. Computer adaptive test works the same way. For the listening tasks, they actually have to listen, they get earbuds and they have to listen to a short excerpt, about a minute and a half, and answer questions based on what they listened to. So, that's the basic overview of the test. So, when we start to go through the results, these are past three years. The first slide is the seventh grade English Language Arts scores. So, you can see that we did make a significant increase in 2016 and the data went down a little bit firmer than you this past year for grade seven, 1% there. The state did have a decline as well. The seventh grade math test, we saw a significant increase in 2016. And last year, though, we were still above the 2015 results. We were down from the previous year. The eighth grade English Language Arts, a different pattern. Similar results to 2015. As with the state, similar results to 2015. In math, we saw a continued increase, though still not where we want to be. So, what this, it's, the way the scores are reported here is the percent for our students that are proficient, so at grade level in the, in the topic, whether it's English Language Arts or math. This chart shows us the class of 2021. So, we were able to take their sixth grade scores and, see, it says approximate. I had to get out the level of school math skills to do some ratios, proportions, and percentages to figure out based on our present day school's size. But, so you can see their scores as sixth graders, as seventh graders, and then eighth graders. So, the eighth grade scores would not be the pattern that we want to see for our students as they get older, they perform better as seventh graders. So, these are the things that we're doing, that we're working on. We have some focused professional developments happening this year for our Title II A grant on, with literacy, specifically with our middle school English Language Arts teachers. They're going to be doing four days with support from the reading and writing workshop. We have made a significant effort to increase the amount of independent reading that students are doing. The text on the S-Batch is long and it is sustained reading. And our students read lots of things, but in short snippets over the course of the day. So, we are asking them to read for greater periods of time. So, that's been a real focus at the end of last year and this year. Specifically, we're trying to increase the amount of text that they read on a computer. They are very comfortable reading printed materials, but it's a, it's a different skill to read large amounts of text on a computer and sustain 20 to 30 minutes of reading on a computer at a time. We have a better tracking system for student data with our standard space grading. We are tracking actual standards and we can follow that. And the S-Batch program provides interim assessments, which are like practice tests, but they are given the same way as the actual test. They log into the computer with their secure password and get data back on their results, which is great. So, we can give these interim tests starting in mid-October to see where they are and where we'd like them to be and also have them just become more familiar with the interface. Though, all the students who will take the test this year have taken the test now for three years. So, their familiarity with the platform and how it works is pretty good. We revamped our math intervention model in the middle school so that we can be more responsive and flexible to student need and have greater assessment of skills so that we can get to them faster and in a more targeted way. We have ongoing improvements to our reading intervention as we want to get to the same place with reading. We have seventh and eighth grade teachers participating in Marzano's Teacher Leadership Academy with a focus on high-quality first instruction. So, making sure that every student has access to high-quality first instruction from their teacher, so that we don't have to do so much remediation and intervention. We have new math department leadership this year and so there's some refreshment there, new set of eyes, which is good. And we have literacy coaching in place and we have our instructional coaching in place. So, we have a great number of things that we're doing to target and support students so that they can be successful and meet the grade level expectations. The big news that you may or may not have heard is that in the high school, the testing year is moving to grade nine as soon as this year. So, instead of having students test in grade 11, they will be testing in grade nine. This will be a disappointment to our ninth graders who thought that they had a few years off, but they have a great deal of experience with the test. And we use tools to help support them, including, we have access to their scores for the past three years. So, we can share with them, we know how you can perform, we've seen you do this before. So, the supports that we have in place in grade nine that we think are encouraging for student success are that we have a team structure that supports stronger student-teacher relationships. We, again, are doing that greater incorporation of independent reading time. The ninth grade is really focused on using a lot of nonfiction text, but also allowing students to choose what they're reading and reading greater amounts of it. All ninth graders are enrolled in Academic Course Support, which is like a supported study hall. And they're using that time not just for students to complete their work, but they're doing targeted vocabulary instruction, they're doing some reading response, and we're also using it to intervene in math. Through Title I funds, we were able to just last week hire a math interventionist to focus specifically on algebra. And he started on Monday and we're very excited about that. We have a reading intervention program in place in grade nine that is directly connected to the grade nine English Language Arts curriculum. So, students are actually receiving pre-instruction so that they can be more successful in the classroom. We have seventh, ninth grade teachers participating in Teacher Leadership Academy, the new department leadership, the coaching. And we're starting to look at different math programming models that better reflect both the real-world applications of math. Math rarely, rarely organizes itself into algebra, geometry, and statistics. Usually those things are integrated. So, we're looking at different options for that. And we have a couple of site visits set up this fall to see what other schools are using successfully. So, those are the things that we're hoping will support our growth in grade nine. So, the 11th grade data is not good. As you can see, we had a significant drop in our English Language Arts scores in 11th grade. Our 11th graders will no longer be tested under the new model from the AOE, but it's still not the encouraging news that we have to see. And unfortunately, the math is, is worse. So, we had significant decrease in both English Language Arts and math results in grade 11, so this year's seniors.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, they're replacing the 11th grade with the ninth grade testing. Is there any way we're going to be able to track the end of the high school piece?
So, the AOE, and I'll talk about this a little bit, but not in the same, not with the same test. So, the, the agency has changed what they're going to look at for mostly 11th and 12th graders, but 10th graders possibly as well. And I'll talk about that a little bit. So, the changes that the Agency of Education has made to school accountability that came out in late, in late August are reflected here. So, we have tested for science for a number of years. For the past three years, that test has been on the Vermont Framework of Standards, which we haven't taught from in three years because Vermont adopted the NGSS. So, this will be the first year that we have a test in science that reflects the standards that we were constructed to teach. And those will be, that test will be in grade eight and 11. So, the 11th graders will still take the science test. For the first time, it will also be computer-based. So, this year's a field test or a pilot. We'll get data back, we'll know how students did, but it will be the first time that they will have taken the assessment. The big change to accountability for end of high school, as you were asking about, Vicki, is they're going to track career and college readiness assessments. So, specifically, they're going to look at student participation and success in these areas that are listed here. So, they're going to look at how many students enroll in dual enrollment classes and receive a grade of a C or better. There, there are cut scores for the SAT, the ACT, the ASVAB, and AP tests. So, how many of our students are taking those tests and meeting the cut scores. And then the last piece, which I'm actually very excited about, is they're going to, as one of the indicators of career and college readiness, they're going to recognize industry-recognized credentials, which we have huge capacity for with our agricultural program here. So, there are some exciting things about this. They're looking at student success in a variety of different ways. I think that they got a lot of feedback about grade 11, spring of grade 11 being a very intense testing year. Kids are taking AP tests, SATs. And it was, it's an overwhelming testing situation for them. So, I'm excited that they're looking at different things. But it does mean that we need to respond and think about how we're going to get our students to participate in these different options and do well. One of the other things that we have to consider is that most of these have associated costs. And we would not want students to not take the SAT because they cannot afford to do so. So, we need to be thinking about funding sources. There are possibilities of using federal grant funding for that, but we need to make sure that any child who is inclined to take these tests is able to do so. And then the final piece is that they are introducing a PE assessment, so a physical education assessment. We don't have a lot of details on that yet. They're supposed to be releasing the grade levels that will be assessed soon. I'm sure there'll be some elementary school and high school grade levels. And they're still working on which assessment they're going to use. So, we don't know what the assessment is yet, though they're aiming to have a pilot out in the spring. So, the, there has been a shift in the things that they're going to be tracking. In the packet I gave you, I gave you the slides, but on the back, couple of pages are the most recent documents from the AOE summarizing the changes around accountability. So, you have one page on those career and college readiness assessments that they're looking for. It gives you the cut scores that they would be expecting for us to count a student as being successful in that area. And then I think the very back page has just a summary of what the new changes are for accountability and what they recommend schools do to comply with those changes.
So, does the testing allow teachers to really drill down into specific data and determine where the skills are weak for each student? Does it allow that? Can it be that specific?
Yes and no. The actual, has to do with the computer adaptive nature of the test. So, when kids take the final S-Batch in the spring, we get three or four pieces of data in math and three or four pieces of data in English Language Arts about each student. And they can't give us finer data than that because each kid is taking a different test. When we do those interim tests, the practice tests that we get data back on, we can get individual question data that we can use to inform our instruction. So, yes and no.
That's perfect, yeah. Good help on the front end, though.
Yes, well, we're going to get it. We have access to those practice tests in October after we get the database up and our students load it in.
I know this is putting the cart before the horse a bit, but if you find, whether it's, and I don't know how we're, students are paying for AP tests, that sort of thing, I don't know if that's working with the school or what, or whether it's SAT or whatever, then once you exhaust your sources, then do come to us. And I mean churches, et cetera, because I would help with that. And I know there are others that would. At least from my perspective, a student who needs to take the SAT will take it if they want to. I mean, in terms of what I can do to help. So, that's just for me and I'm sure there are others that would feel the same way.
Thank you. Can I have a question? IB is international, back to Oregon?
Yes, yes, which we don't have any, we aren't on an IB school and we don't have any IB courses right now. So, that's what that is, yeah.
But is college-level entrance proficiency?
Which I don't actually know anything about. I think it's an older assessment. It's not something our students typically take. So, the ones I listed are the ones that we're most familiar with.
Let go allow you to take the test and opt out of a particular course because your score's a lot.
So, something like an AP test or?
Except you actually, you do not have to take it when you want.
Good question.
Yeah.
Do you have the numbers, the number of students that are actually participating in SATs, ACT tests, and AP courses?
We do have those numbers. I don't have them in my presentation right now.
How is that, I mean, what does that look like? Do we have a significant number of kids taking those AP courses?
Not, not as, we have a lot of students participating in dual enrollment. We would like to see more, more students participate in the SAT and the ACT. Many of our students who had traditionally taken the AP test are taking that course as a dual enrollment option now. So, we're kind of seeing some, the numbers are doing some unexpected things there, but we'd like to see more students take part.
So, was it, to put it in a percentage, what is the percentage of the number of students that are actually participating in SATs or AP courses?
Probably, SATs, I'd say probably about half. It would be similar to our college enrollment. So, we're at 50 to 60%. I think we were, this year it was about 60 for two and four-year colleges.
So, 50% of our students are actually in AP courses?
No, take, take the SAT. The AP courses, it's dependent upon how many we offer and we have a limited number of offerings right now.
Second question. All the things that you listed that you're doing, is that part of a coordinated school improvement plan that's monitored? It involves staff, perhaps, if you're reviewing the plan, make the changes, operations, and things that will happen, so?
So, we met in the springtime as a leadership team and we developed our school improvement plan based on the data that we had collected around a lot of these same data points. We met when we returned in August and the, both the school improvement grant and the consolidated federal grant that we received now require that we meet quarterly to review the plan and the data and make adjustments and do kind of like a small data cycle to see whether the pieces that we put in place are in fact, in fact, defunctual.
So, you do have a continuous improvement plan in this school?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of that?
Not right this second.
I don't make excuses for test scores, but one of the things I've, I noticed in the past was that hitting the ground running on a new test seemed to kind of, you got a baseline, the next year you tended to jet up because, you know, the kids were kind of in a, in a mode of wanting to do better because maybe the first year they didn't. And then I always saw, and I tried not to make this a self-provocative prophecy, but I always saw a drop of a year. I just did, no matter where I was. And so, again, that's not an excuse and I'm appreciative of all the things that you're, that the school is implementing. I just, I've seen that phenomenon happen. It looks like it's a bit true across Vermont as well. And I don't know what explains it, I just often saw it. So, no excuses, just maybe a little piece of an explanation about that bit.
And it could be a piece of what we saw happen in the middle school and across the state, because you're, as you said, the state provide results did go down. I don't know that it explains the huge drop in grade 11.
It does. And I would say that is grade 11. You were talking about all the testing. Again, no excuses, but maybe some explanations. And also, what, what is it other than intrinsic desire to do well that encourages a student to do well on these? Is it tied to their grading? Is it tied to, is it put on their? Is it tied to, is it put on their, I mean, it really figures strongly into their transcript? And the answer would be no.
Not as of yet. You know, we talked about, when we thought the test was staying in grade 11, we were sure that it was going to go on the transcript this year because these students would have taken the test as eighth graders. I don't know about putting ninth grade results on a transcript. That seems a little young to do that. But, you know, I think you're right. There's the piece about intrinsic motivation in the younger grades. We see a pattern of kind of adult-pleasing behavior. You know, they still have that desire to please their teacher and please their parents, and we capitalize that on that as much as possible. And perhaps we'll see some of that in grade nine because of the better student-teacher relationships that the teams provide for. I think that a lot of it is about, I want to do well for my school because I am proud of the school which I go to, and I think we can do a lot with that.
I agree.
So, I just did a quick run of the numbers, taking a look at teacher schedules, and we have 125 students taking AP tests, AP classes.
Okay.
That includes AP Psych, AP Calc, Biology, English 11, English 12, Micro, and Government.
Some of those might be the same students. Assuming that they're not repeating.
That's nine to 12.
Any questions for Jen or for the team?
I've heard something, and I'm not even sure if there's a name for it or what it's called, that the students are not allowed, or they don't get an incomplete, they're allowed to finish an assignment whenever they're, feel like they're ready to complete it. Could you give us an explanation as to what that is?
Sure. So, the procedures had a couple different additions over the past four years, five years. The current procedures are that if you are giving an assessment and the student doesn't perform where they need to or doesn't hand it in, they have until two weeks after the end of the marking period to get it in. The ideal being, you need more support to get to where you need to be, and so we would come in with the support. And in many cases, it happens that way through teachers reteaching. We have a credit recovery program to support that. What sometimes happens is that students, being teenagers, see that as a window of opportunity to not do something until that very last minute. And we have been continuously working to try to create that balance between giving students that opportunity to revise and improve their learning when appropriate, but not give them that false sense that they don't have to do something, right? So, we've been working with that.
And part of that addresses, what I understood to be a statistic, and I'd have to find where the source came from, but is how, in the past, our thinking was informed by that very thing, and by this very thing, to do that sort of thing that you're talking about, which is extend some time and give grace. Because, you know, in the past, if we didn't turn in on time, you got an F, and F would usually fail you. And for every F or every failed class, the statistics show that the student is 25 percent more likely for every single one to drop out of school. And so, you do the best you can with the tools, and that's one tool, to try to make sure they don't.
And it's one that we're working to continuously improve. The other piece is that with proficiency-based graduation requirements, students cannot graduate until they are proficient, which means that they have to have repeated opportunities to show proficiency. So, as we move toward that model, where we are legally obligated to not graduate students unless they are at grade level standard and have to give them multiple attempts to get there, it was one way that we attempted to make that transition.
This isn't a question, more of a statement. It seems to me that, well, the statistics show that aspect scores are down on call across the state. It's become somewhat of a political issue these days. I'm very suspicious of the changing from 11th to ninth grade doesn't mean so changing the outcome to the testing. And as Mrs. Gradman mentioned, it seems kind of bizarre that we would go three years without doing some kind of formal assessments or standardized assessment for any other reason to make sure that our students are stand prepared.
It doesn't seem to be working.
I'm disappointed in the scores as well.
Interesting explanation of stuff.
Any other questions?
Seems good to be talking about this. It's one of our goals.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, team.
All we have from the administrative team for this evening.
We've got a little finance facility.
All right. The principal's report. All right, we will go through our check forms then. So, we're ready for this. I would add a motion to accept the check warrant report to dates August 12, 2017 to September 1, 2017, in the amount of $141,244.07. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that.
Motion by Vicki, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Greg. Is there any discussion?
What was the date on that?
The, August 12 to September 1. August 12 to September 1. It's one that got emailed out probably about August.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I see there's contract custodial work in here. It seems like it's getting higher every time you turn around. You know, is it feasible, or, you know, I think it's something we need to look at a little bit better.
Right. I'm just assuming, I'm assuming that because it was August 12 to September 1, it was probably more hours included.
You start talking almost 20,000, I think, a month, you know, we're getting up there, you know, and it's, that's, you know, we're gonna have to do something, you know. You know, it's...
Would that, would be any truth to that at all, that, you know, August 12 to September 1, it was a bigger bill?
There was overtime to get ready for school and stuff like this because there was, we're running late on some of our floors, stuff like this.
Well, I don't know how it compares.
Well, it's a lot slower the next time, isn't it? The second to the fifteenth.
That's my hope. Otherwise...
That's what it looks like. I might be missing some pieces. You can tell me, Richard. Looks like it's considerable.
I didn't see it, and I only saw it in the front of the...
Some of those were probably summer help, too, where there was two extra employees for the summer and let them go and started the school year.
But they were all from both parts.
They were all both parties, right.
It's still amounted to about $10,000 for the two weeks, the next two weeks, September 1. So, yeah. Well, I think that's something we're always working towards. The work has to be done.
The goal is, we're trying to hire our own employees. Nobody applies.
We've made some changes.
We've made some definite changes in pay scale, and it still hasn't changed the situation at any test.
Let me just speak a little bit to that. I sit on the Workforce Investment Board, and they're the organization that run the Clean Sweep Custodial Training System. And I've asked Paul to sit on a panel for that committee to talk with employers and with potential attendees. I feel like if we are in it at that level, we're gonna be more likely to be able to hire people who are graduates of that. We have a Clean Sweep graduate that's been working here for three years. Maybe four.
Three, four years, and you're going next in the job.
Yeah. And so, we're moving in that direction. We just haven't arrived yet.
I think we gotta push it more. It used to, you could get high school kids, and I think we're pushing college. You know, there's kids that are out there with no jobs, you know, and seniors that is out there with no jobs. Are we introducing the custodian to them? Are we giving them a chance? Are we looking at these guidance counselors looking down the road and giving these kids a chance? You know, at one time, there was quite a few graduates that worked here. You know, and I think we've gotta go back and, you know, not just push college, but push the workforce still.
As a part of the certification that Jen was talking about, those kinds of credentials now have more meaning for how the state is assessing and encouraging schools to have
Any other questions on those check warrants? Very good point made, Richard, by the way. Thank you. Hearing no more questions on the report, I'm in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. Circulate that. All right, I would also entertain a motion for check warrant report from September 2, 2017 to September 15, in the amount of $480,170.80.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Greg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion on the new check warrants?
The Mongas, it's a no, but it looks like we're always paying them late, so we get charged for late due. Is there any reason we can ask them to push the date out for when it's, he gets due on like the 22nd, so, you know, this one's gonna be late as well.
Well, we're also looking at using the procurement card, the purchase card, to pay that as well, and we would also earn rebates by using that. So, that's something that we're looking into. It's the timing of when we get the invoices to when it comes before the board for approval. So, we're looking at ways of fixing that.
So, now, how many MBU's is it using right now?
I believe it's five or six.
Oh, we're using five or six here?
Yeah.
And the gas and all that's not on?
Not yet, no, no.
Because I think that they just, like, put it on.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Makes sense.
We're talking about it, but I haven't actually took those steps forward. Something where High Data's starting to do it, so I think MBU would benefit from that as well.
That's the same idea as paying bills with a credit card and then...
It would be more of a ghost card. It's not a card that would actually be handled, but we would contact with Mongas to charge that card each month rather than having an invoice.
So, there's five or six cards floating around amongst whoever has them.
They're not fully, they're signed.
They're assigned to someone, so there's either a number and name associated with those. Each one of those cards get a statement?
Mm-hmm.
Should that be included with the warrants?
There are, there should be some backup for the procurement cards in there. We don't write a check for them. Actually, the banking goes actually into our account and debits the account. But there should be a list of the charges in the warrants. That probably shows as a NCM, a non-check, NCB, a non-check badge. So, those are, when you see those on the warrants, those are the charges on the procurement cards.
But that's fine, but it still doesn't solve that Mongas expects to be paid on the 22nd, and, you know, our board meetings happen in no month, which case, it's still not gonna be on time. You think you just feel that someone should just be able to call them and say, hey, you know, we have this continuous issue. Can we just change the due date? It's like, you know, like a credit card. You can call them up, and you just change the billing cycle. Okay. You think someone put a note to have her look into that?
Does that bill overall higher certain times of the year, I'm sure.
Okay, so right now, it's a small revision. It's based on a percent.
Right, just get out ahead of that.
Any other comments or questions?
Just a couple of future purposes. What three people that are authorized to use that P-card?
I believe, well, there are certain departments that have a P-card associated with them, like the plant would have a card, the administration, I believe, have a card. And then there are two or three that stay in the fiscal office that can be signed out by, like, the art department or...
So, I was under the impression that there were three people that are authorized to use the credit card or the P-card. And my next follow-up question that was gonna be is, I guess you just answered it, that the P-card, even though it's been authorized to be used by three individuals in the school, that a staff member could approach that individual, request the P-card, and go out and make a purchase?
They could sign it out.
The other thing that kind of makes me a little nervous about this is that this is functioning as a typical credit card, that when you purchase something, that transaction has been completed. The transaction has been made, the money has been spent. So, how does that, could that be seen as interfering with the process of approving check warrants every week? I mean, the board has to approve check warrants, but then you have a P-card purchase that basically is already approved without the board giving it its official approval.
We would have the option of disputing any charge, but I have to look into that. I don't have a...
It seems like it interferes with the process of approving check warrants.
I could see that a little after.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, in favor of the motion to approve the...
Can you make a note as to what Jay said about the P-card?
For the minutes or just for my purposes?
Minutes.
All right, I'm in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, motion carries.
I believe that was, I think, move the watershed infiltration grant down to my report, and I think we have to have the principal's report. Anything else from the malt team, go, and then we can send those folks on home.
I believe everybody received a copy of the principal's report in your packet. Just a few of the highlights, homecoming was just last week. Culminated with a spirit assembly last Friday afternoon against all the classes. The middle school was involved, which was great. And that evening, there was a school-wide, you can call it a dance, but it was volleyball, there was all kinds of games out on the fields, just kind of making use of the lights out right here. There were games, night games all week. Wily Poppy, I was here for the, several of them, right after Powder Puff. But, the night that they had all the middle school soccer games, I mean, the fields were packed, and it was being ref by high school players. It was a great event, brought in a lot of people, heard a lot of positive comments all week long. And I think we estimated somewhere around 350 to 400 kids at the dance on Friday night. And that would be seven through 12. So, a good chunk of our student population came. And I'd actually received an email from a parent on Tuesday morning just saying, thank you. It was great that my kid was able to be involved and has been a great first three weeks of school, and just very, very happy about the way things have gone.
I get a little something, though, Dan.
Yes.
You know, you had all kinds of activities here last week, games, you had football, you had everything. But I looked through the cross-country schedule, there ain't a home cross-country scheduled meet here at MBU. There has been for the last 16 years, sometimes three. And they don't get their names on the board out there or nothing. You have a homecoming and everything. They're not even having a district meet because Stepford moved it back, and you want to have it on the 21st, but we're having a football game. We can't go around the football game, and a lot of people called me up and said, I I follow sports, I'm going to take backseat to football." And that's a concern. This, this big meet went on for 16 years and it has been successful. And it has been, and you started it, you worked with us great, Jay, in 2000, you got this thing rolling. It needs to keep rolling. And we need cross-country meets every year. And we, we, and you need to send people to the scheduling meetings.
I, I can't speak for John, but, but what I do know is that you're absolutely right. Stepford did change the dates of the state meet, and as a result, um, we heard that many schools did not want to run back-to-back weekends getting ready for the state meet.
But there is some that would, would have came that I know you could have had a meet on that Saturday, the 21st.
We, we could have, but as you well know, we have, uh, we have always run the NVAC conference meet, basically as a public relations opportunity for MBU. We've never made money on it. We've lost anywhere from $500 to $2,000 a year on it. This year, had we run it, we would have lost even more, I would imagine, because of the number of schools that would not be attending.
But, but you could have had a regular meet, Jay, and you know, you, even if you...
We can probably discuss this one a little bit later.
You know, you, you could have had a regular meet and, you know...
Very possible.
You know, I just think it's, you know, it's something, you know, I just think that cross-country getting backseat to football and, and the big thing was, it was never going to happen that way. And, and I, you know, that program's come a long ways, and to see no meet here, that, so that hurts.
Hopefully, uh, hopefully Stepford will reverse their course next year and we'll be able to, we'll be able to bring it back.
But they need to have regular, even if you can't, you need to have meets here. There's no reason you can't have meets here. You know, you can schedule meets here, you know, it takes time to get that course ready, I know. But you gotta do it.
Thank you, Richard. Anything else on the principal's report?
Both the middle school and the high school had their open house. Middle school had theirs on September 12th. Again, had about 250 to 270 people total. A little bit down, I think, attendance-wise. Of the couple of people that I, I spoke with that, uh, I didn't see here, they just said that things are going well. They didn't think they needed to come, and they knew who the teachers were, so they, they kind of heard some of the things in the past, so they didn't, didn't come. The high school open house had theirs last night. Again, probably roughly 150 to 170 people. All kinds of, uh, displays out there. Steve Messay was there talking about the Alice program, and student council was there, National Honors Society was there, National Arts Honors Society, as well as all the departments were represented in the commons, which is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. We've heard that, the feedback that we, we received was, when they had it in the gym, the noise level was really, really loud, and it was hard to hear everybody. So we moved it up to commons, it could be spread out a little bit, and the acoustics were a little bit better for it. And the people that I spoke with, and I think everybody else here spoke with last night, seemed to go well, so.
Any other questions for our team?
Hearing none. With the exception of Paul, I realize we didn't have a facilities component to this, so we'll have Paul go next. And if the board has no other questions for administrators, or Jay, Dan, and Jen, then I think we have time to head on down the road. Let me, let me just transition. Paul and the committee of board members have been working on a facilities implementation plan based on the Weeman Lampier facilities audit. And we have copies of that audit for board members that are not on that committee, and also a prioritized list. Paul's going to hand those, hand those around. So let me, let me share that list here on the board while they're coming around. I'll make it a little bit bigger here. So you might remember, Tim Duff from Weeman Lampier made a general presentation last meeting. The committee then looked through the prioritization list and pulled out what we thought, we're calling these short-term priorities. And you can take a look up here on the, on the board. What I've got highlighted here, wait till they get all around. What I'm showing up here is very similar to what you have as a handout. We made some changes in the committee meeting that proceeded in this board meeting. So this first list, and I'm going to highlight them now so that you can see them. You have a listing of curb and sidewalk, it's snowmelt west, chip plant addition, it's piping, it's the overall building, external repairs, this electrical component, this new switch gear, electric switch gear, chiller and tower. Paul, would you like to deliver the very, very good news?
Okay, so quoting out, recoding out the bleachers again, you'll find the one that's from Robert Lord, uh, that is considerably cheaper than what it was when we bid out, uh, I think it was seven or 10 years ago. When we bid them out that time, it was about $1.2 million for the bleachers. And going with kind of the traditional bleachers that we have right now, uh, they're just a little under $300,000, and that seats, um, 1,362. And, uh, that's just a little less than what we see right now. We see 1,400 right now. And the second quote is for the squared-off version, which is, um, probably about $46,000 less that, uh, seats, uh, 1,300 people.
Excuse me, Dan. Do you have a copy of those?
Yep, it's right here.
Press the link. Did you give them speed to pass me?
Yep.
Pass that to...
And so, the difference in the two quotes are 65 capacity difference between the 25, uh, the 250,000 and 300,000. So it's considerable savings than what we originally were expecting those costs to come back at.
The idea of going to a straight bleacher in that gym was never really set too well. I'm, I'm glad that it seems like a pretty reasonable price for bleachers that would fit that gym.
Yeah. Not custom to fit exactly the way that they are now.
So in addition to that, you'll see here gym floor walls and ceiling, ceiling refinishing and painting. If we're going to pull out those bleachers that have been in there since 1970, it makes a lot of sense to redo the floor that are under them, and also the wall that's behind it, and the ceiling that's over it. So you're looking at roughly $80,000. So if you, if you do an accumulation of all of those expenses, you're looking at a bit over 3 mil. And a potential bond for that with some contingency would be roughly 3.25 mil. If you recall, our strategy has been, and our last bond was 2.5 mil, and that accrued to 125,000 a year bond payment over a 20-year period. 21 years ago, you could buy a lot more for 2.5 mil than you can today. So this is actually an equivalent amount. But these would be the short-term priorities. And we also have some second-tier priorities which are under it. And we're looking at track resurfacing at 50,000. And the issue here with, the challenge we have with four-wheelers and motorcycles and everything else that runs across the property, we really need to fence around the track complex, really around the athletic field complex, to keep them off both athletic fields, but in particular, it would probably be fairly enticing to run a couple of four-wheelers around the track a few times just to see what Thunder Road North might look like, and that's not going to be very conducive to new track service. So you can invest, uh, some sizable dollars in repair of a track without having some way to prevent it from getting damaged. The underbuilding drain pipes at 75,000, and these two, there's a stormwater project that I, I tabled earlier. I'm working with a couple of organizations, the Lake Champlain Chamber, not Chamber, Lake Champlain, Basin, Chamber, that's my old job. Basin organization has stormwater mitigation grants, as does the Regional Planning Commission, working with Highgate, and I'd like to work also with MBU. It's really about, there's a very sizable footprint here with the roofing of the actual facility, as well as the impervious parking lot surfaces, that we're running rainwater off from those surfaces, and they're ending up in the Mesiskoi. And it's, again, this is part of the mitigation process with some state and federal grant money that's available to take a look at how we might do things differently with infiltration systems, with rain gardens, with different kinds of drywells that keep the water on the surface, excuse me, keep the water on location and not run it into the river. And these, both Highgate Elementary and MBU are very attractive to these organizations because they're large-scale. They do a lot of small-scale things, but they have a sizable amount of money. So I don't know yet what we might be looking at, but I would like permission from this board to pursue this. It won't cost us any money to do a design, and from the design, they would be able to identify what expenses that would be covered by these grants, and what expenses would be covered by budget money, reserve fund money, or bond money. One thing I do know is, these grants don't pay for the actual paving. They pay for design work, they pay for some of the, uh, the green options that I listed before. So at that point, I guess I'd like to hear what, what your opinions are. The committee has, just had a brief discussion about that. What are your thoughts on moving forward with pursuing potential grant funds?
What was the committee's summary as to the discussion?
Made sense to bring in some, some more players. Because I think, like, you know, his experience, Ben's experience with, with Highgate, uh, they seem very interested in working with Highgate as far as the designing and planning the whole system. So I've got to believe that they would be as interested, if not more, here.
It might be nice to get some input on a design so that we can have future use of this stormwater, because I know Jay and I've talked about this for many years, about over in the backside of the Penn area, as far as having an irrigation pond out there with stormwater running through it, so that we can actually use it to irrigate our fields during summertime.
Likely to be a good place to throw a coach after they win the state championship, too.
You think of it that way, just though?
I know. Forget the Gatorade over the head, you throw him a pond.
In for that, I stayed. Thank you.
And the plan that was given us, of course, to mitigate water all around the building was, was pretty extensive and expensive, and so this will be a way to kind of do some of these other things, but to get some outside information, and then we can decide at that point, once we have the outside information of possible grants, then we could make a decision. That's what we were talking about.
So yes, at this point, we'd be looking for a motion to direct our superintendent...
Just, I'm sorry, one question. If you're contemplating coming to the taxpayers with a bond for about 165,000 a year, is that it?
Uh, what was the number that...
Are you going to consider possibly eliminating the $100,000 cap or you may miss...
We discussed that as well, yeah.
So you'll eliminate that...
I didn't say we would. I said we discussed it. So we're trying to figure out a balance there.
I'm, I'm just thinking from a practical point of view, that if you're asking for a four-and-a-half million dollar bond, from a taxpayers' perspective, it would probably be a lot easier to get it approved if you were to eliminate that $100,000 hurdle.
Right, right, right. And I know that we had the, the bond that we just finished. We had that, and people have always, voters have always supported the $100,000 fund as well, so...
Tough to get both of them.
Right, right. We did have a little bit of discussion in committee, and I don't think we're at the point where we're going to commit to the bond tonight.
Right.
So, uh, but...
And I just want to clarify, your sheet might say four-point something, but with the diminishment of the bleacher replacement, we're looking at something 3.25 mil if we were to go with all of these short-term priorities.
And for 20 years previous, we've paid 125,000 in bond repayment. So our goal was to try to stay at that same payment level so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt any more than it already did. Really can't see a lot of projects there that we want to cut out to get down to, we'd have to be down to 2.25 million, or two and a half million, two and a half million to get down to that 125,000 a year payment level. So we're talking another, another $750,000 off from that list, and we really, I mean, there's certainly time for discussion. We haven't committed to anything.
Dennis, looking at, you know, the bleachers have dropped, and there's been one thing that MBU doesn't have that other schools got, and I think MBU needs one, is a generator. I think we need a generator here, you know, for all the things, the water, and I, I think that's one of the biggest things of importance we need. And see that the bleachers went down, you know, you know, you know, what, what can we put a generator in here for, you know?
And, and we've, you know, we've had that discussion a lot, too.
I, I've heard there's been some offers out there.
And I think, you know, as far as where that generator stands now, in my mind, is we decided that we needed a place to put it before we got it, and, uh, that...
Chip plant addition.
Chip plant addition, there it is, third one down.
But, but your generator could sit right there, so, you know, right, right on a pad with a little fence around it, you know?
It could, but that would be the appropriate location to put it, because our main power comes in right there.
Right, right.
And there's a fair amount...
Minimize our, our wiring.
Good.
A big expense to get it connected, and then we're talking about that new electrical gear, that's talking about bringing all that electrical out of the, out of the hole and into a new addition. So I agree with you, and I was a big pusher for that generator, and I still am. But...
Because I, I, I think if we're going to move forward, Dennis, I think we've got to move forward, you know, so guys, you know, so custodians don't have to run down here in the middle of the, in the night and all that, you know? And we're, we're trying to hire custodians, and if they don't have to come down here on a Saturday and Sunday and sit here, you know?
Right, I agree. And, and, you know, we had, we had a great generator all lined up at a great price, and we just decided, and we didn't decide one way or the other. It's still there, as far as I know, so...
Are the provisions made? Are they accounting for a generator?
Not in this...
None encompassing in this, but when you're doing the switch gear and stuff, if we're thinking about doing a generator, this is the exact time we want to think about it, because what we do is we put the transfer switch right ahead of the switch.
To me, that's a no-brainer. You would make the provisions for that whether it happens this year or next year, whatever. It's talked about. It's, we know it's something that eventually we're going to have to have something like that.
And, and, you know, it's funny you say no-brainer, because in my mind, it was the same thing, but there's not, we didn't have unanimous consensus on that.
Maybe then the, the infrastructure wasn't in place, but it looks like that's going in place now.
You know, I, I look at the, you know, the big savings, you know, fall side, the million dollars on bleachers... dollars on bleachers, you know, you know, that generator that you talked about, I knew it, I heard the price, and, you know, and it's going to run the school, and, you know, I think that's something.
Well, we even talk about savings, we were talking a little off-topic, but we talked about with that generator, we could run it a little bit every month, and it would just, it would keep us, keep our ratcheting fees down, and we'd save a lot of money doing that. And I'm not sure if that's still the case after some research.
Well, I had some discussions with the town manager, and he doesn't think that that's beneficial for us to do, but the thing is, is he did agree that a generator would be a beneficial place to hear, seeing so we're right across your location center, and so that would help into that. But we have been doing things like the hot water heater project and the booster heater in the kitchen has made a huge difference in some of that project.
The other thing, Richard, back to having it outside, the generator we were looking at, I think it was 350 horse cat, and the issue is have that a cold start at 30 below zero with that cold oil, it's better to have it to be in a heated facility, and so if this chip plant addition could house that, it would be better for the continued service of a unit like that.
But that's the reason for not buying it, you can build a building around that and insulate it. Build that building very, very cheap.
But there's a lot of generators that are outside, yeah, at schools that, you know.
And I think that when we started talking about that is when we started talking about the whole wood chip plant addition, and it is very expensive to interconnect a generator into the system, and to do it once just made more sense, I guess.
So, so in this plan, Paul, you are planning on having a hookup, right? In the plan for a generator, when you're doing it?
When we hit, yes, we've talked about a transfer switch, so then the rest of it would be an add-on from there.
Okay. So we call this kind of first blush, look at the short-term priorities and the categories that were extracted from the facility's audit. I guess that's probably all we need to talk about today.
Where I was starting to go, I lost my focus, was we were looking for a motion to authorize or direct our superintendent to pursue a grant with the purpose of, I guess, for the stormwater.
Design.
Design, stormwater and collection design, something to that effect.
Right.
So, now if I can get that motion, we can have a little discussion on that.
Salute.
Motion by Father Rob, second.
That's all saying it.
Second by Greg. All right, so we had that discussion already, I think that's, you know, he's basically going to be looking towards the Champlain Basin Organization and.
Regional Planning Commission.
Regional Planning Commission, but they seem, they seem agreeable.
Yep.
And just to be clear, money involved to this point as far as the design one, out of our pocket?
Right, these are, these are grants that we receive them, that pay 100% of the design process, and would then provide the board with some direction and cost factors if you choose to move forward.
So, when, from what I understand, so, so we're going to go 100% right off, or like Highgate, remember we went 30, and then, are we going to do the same here?
I found out today, they're not interested in going 30.
Okay.
You either go 100% or you don't go any.
Okay.
So there was some, I won't say erroneous information, but they checked, and that's what they found out.
Can you clarify what we're talking about?
Pardon?
Can you clarify what we're talking about, because we're not perusing this highly discussion.
Right. Highgate is looking at an environmentally sound project that would have rain gardens and collection basins coming off drip edges of the school, and also on the perimeter of the parking lot with catch basins and rain gardens, so that it absorbs the rainwater on site.
So 130 is, they want to catch 100% of the water versus 30?
Right, they want to keep it on-site.
Oh, they want to keep everything on-site.
Right. The issue is, in the traditional drainage process, you slope, run it through pipes to ponds, and in our case, we're actually looking to do that in a pond that we could use for irrigation. Again, we've got a larger scale process and project here at MBU. Highgate's more looking at just keeping it on-site rather than having it be part of the watershed that eventually drains into the Miscisco. That's the interest of these grants, is to look differently at how we handle rainwater and impervious surfaces.
So why is that 30%?
Put it out of your mind. We thought we could do, they're either 30 or 100%, I found out today, they're only interested in doing 100% of the design, so it doesn't cost you anything to have the full-scale design, and then the board takes a look at that and decides whether or not they want to move forward and actually undertake a project like this. And it fits with what the Weeman-Lanfeer project was. They didn't specify whether it was a stormwater project or just drainage, and they had $1,038 put in there for that expense. If we can even cut that in half, it makes sense to do it on somebody else's dollar rather than on ours. It's always more fun spending other people's money.
Absolutely.
All right, any other comments or questions on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none, all clear of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's have it, motion carries.
Thank you, I'll keep you posted, you've gotten a little while.
I've got a question, though. Do they determine stormwater runoff is what's running off our parking lots and our roof and things, so that's not considered what we're pumping out of the basin?
Right.
Okay.
And the roof water, as I understand, it's already all going underground through piping?
It is, it's going, routing around, but the thing is, is we're pumping about 13,000 gallons of water a day out of our stumps versus, you know, a lot of times in stormwater runoff, you have some dry time in between, or we don't have any dry time on our pumping.
We certainly can look at the whole comprehensive approach. All right. Good conversation.
Yep. Uh, where are we? The facilities, was there anything else from Paul?
I think we're okay. I believe so. Any other questions for Paul?
So we're not giving the actual short-term priorities at this point?
We're just kind of looking at them for now? I think we put it out there for now.
The only thing is, we might want to just do a little clarification, when you start looking at the priority list versus looking at the actual report, you'll notice that on the mechanical piping and stuff, you'll see that we cut 6.2, 6.26 in half, and that was due to we had an emergency piping project two weeks before we started school, and over in EPOD, we had to cut eight-inch line to put a butterfly valve in, so that we could work further down the line and start putting the rest of school back, pumping the glycol back in to start air conditioning the rest of the school. So we found that, originally, we were talking, we were thinking that there's probably some erosion on the bottom of the main pipes, and that basically wasn't true. That pipe, when we cut it, was virtually the same thickness as it probably was or post installation. So what we did is we figured that some of this other pipe is possibly in the same shape, because the actual, what was causing the leak and stuff was the threads around the valve were ready to break off, and that's why we had to do some, you know, there's no way to shut the water off downstream, so that's why we had to drain all the water and put a butterfly valve in. So what I was looking to do is, to back that information up, is this summer coming up, I'd like to put another butterfly valve in so that we can bypass certain zones of the buil, there's no way to shut this building down. And this way here, if we have an issue in APOD, we'll be able to isolate it and work on the stuff. And so, and if that pipe is the same thickness there in APOD when we cut it this summer, then we'll know we don't need to replace that main line. We just need to replace the takeoffs where it's gone to a threaded fin, or dudes will cut that and eliminate it, we'll go to a flange-type butterfly valve instead, so that we don't have that issue in the future. So that's some clarification, as you look between the two, why we cut that portion in half.
You're just the bearer of good news tonight, Paul.
Try to be, not always on that bullet, though.
Becky had a new tractor?
It came tonight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, Henry's pretty happy out there with it.
Yeah, I'm still running it tonight, isn't he?
Oh, I don't know, he might be sleeping out on the shed. All right, we'll see you later. How good do you think?
Let us transition so that we can have Becky leave sooner rather than later, and I'll finish my other report afterwards. You remember that we've had some fairly lengthy conversations about capital reserve fund with different names, and we have an opinion from an attorney, our attorney, and Jay Deno has got interest in this, and also has opinion from another attorney. I believe we've got draft language for a vote in November, November 7th, that will rectify the challenges that we have in this, in this process. And there are three articles here, I'm not professing that we run three articles at the, at the public vote, but I just want to give you a little bit of insight into where the deficiencies are in language. And no one, I guess it's kind of like no-fault insurance, no one's fault over time, there were a couple of nuances in language that changed, and the issue in the first article, which is the capital renewal maintenance project, there's $25,000 in there with accrued interest that was for a roof maintenance stabilization fund. Again, we're going to give you lots of names, and then I'm going to make a recommendation of what we might call it. What we're, what we're saying here to the voters is, we're just chewing up the use of public funds that help to maintain the school facility, just to give some context, every year, or most every year, the board has set aside anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000 to be able to bank in advance the funds to be able to do routine maintenance. Again, this school was built in 1970, you have a 30-year lifespan for a lot of the mechanical components of it, it's like, just like a house, you have to paint it, you have to do re-roof, you have to do other kinds of things, and these funds were dedicated for that purpose. The problem is, $25,000 of that is not exactly in language that allows us to do it. The second article, this is the roof maintenance stabilization fund into the capital renewal maintenance project fund, and you can see where the language tripped us up a little bit, there's $40,000 plus accrued interest in that. And the article that I think will put some flesh around, in total, we have a roof stabilization fund combined with capital renewal reserve fund and capital renewal maintenance project funds, again, three different names, and in total, we have $520,735. And by state law, what the public does, what voters do, is they forward, they authorize the expenditure of these funds within a five-year period for these kinds of issues. And as you think about this, you either put money in a budget that you use every year, or you bank some money in advance up to five years, that you do bigger projects, and then the really, really big projects you do on bonds that are 20-year paybacks. And so what we have here is a little bit more than the half million dollars that is set aside to do re-roof, to do other kinds of issues, and Paul has a, has a list of kinds of things that, that we would use for that. We just need the voters to tell us that it's okay to combine these funds together, and my recommendation is we, we name it something simple, like MBU Capital Reserve Fund, and with a clear understanding of what the purpose of that fund is, and the voters, hopefully at the November 7th vote, which is also an Act 46 vote, will authorize us, under that new heading, to be able to use that, that money. And that, in, in as simple of terms as I can project here, that's what I'm encouraging you to support tonight. I don't think we're going to have the exact language tonight, because I think we need to have some discussion about it. What I'm going to ask you to consider is, on October 4th, the SU Board meets, we're going to have to make a decision, if it's going on the November ballot, no later than October 6th, we'll have to make a decision and get sign-offs from the board members to be able to post that as a ballot item for the November 7th vote. So we can either do it with the three board members that are at the SU Board meeting, or other board members just come into the office and sign off on that, if we can somewhat agree tonight on the shape of what the ballot language will be.
Why does this have to do with the SU Board?
Pardon? It doesn't, it's just that three of your board members are going to be at that meeting anyway, so those three could sign off then.
The meeting's October 4th, and the deadline for signing a warrant would be October 6th.
Or we could have a short MBU Board meeting prior to the SU Board, if we, if we needed more discussion about that. So there's a couple of ways that we could do it.
Yeah, I've heard Lynn's comments and stuff, you know, what do you say, you've been working on this, Jay, what do you think about what is said here?
Well, I agree with most of it, except for the last statement, the last sentence in Article 3. Should say, Article 3. I'm not so sure that it's, it's within the purview of law, law, to include the last statement that says that if not approved, the existing previously planned shall remain in place and shall not be consolidated. When you think about a reserve fund, that's what you're creating here now formally, it's the decision of the electorate to decide how that money is going to be used, and technically speaking, that money is never in the possession of the school board, so to speak, in a reserve fund. So long as it's being targeted for the things that you're saying here, that's fine, you know, but I'm not so sure that you're going to be allowed to put that last sentence in there. Because that decision of how you use that fund, those funds, is up to the voters to decide in a reserve fund. Everything else I.
Yeah, what you're saying is that what was in place before shall be in place because you voted not to change it, which means that it will remain in the separate funds and can't be consolidated, because that's what we live under right this minute without a change, correct? So that language would be most appropriate in the last sentence.
Well, like I said, when you create a reserve fund, it's not to say that the electorate is giving you the permission to use that fund for a specific purpose. And for example, if you complete that purpose and there's money left over, that money remains in the fund until such time as the electorate tells you what to do with it. So I don't believe that, in this particular case, since you're creating a reserve fund, I don't think that is consistent with the requirements to include a document, a statement in there that says that if this article is voted down, that basically you're going to keep the funds intact where they are now. I don't think you can do that.
But you can't do it elsewhere without having.
I can't hear you, John.
You can't do any else with the funds unless you, you know, prove something else.
Well, it's the taxpayers that have to prove that.
Right, and I think all the statement just saying is if it gets voted down, nothing happens, it just, it's, it is.
This is giving you my opinion, and based on the research that I've done on this, I don't think that last sentence you could put in there.
I would have ruled out if the sentence is legal, so.
Well, I wonder if.
Well, I wonder if it is anyway.
But I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to object to it with that, that, you know, I personally think that it's a taxpayer's best interest to approve this article and target the money for what it should be used for, instead of leaving it in a CD somewhere or a savings account. I mean, the whole principle behind this is to ensure that the money that's been accumulated over those years is done in a proper way, and it's used for what it needs to be used for. But I still don't think you can put that last sentence in there legally.
Well, and I also wonder if even this sentence needs to be in there.
I mean, the important thing too, I might add, is that you're referring to 24 VSA 2004, that's a really important part of that article.
I would say the last two sentences aren't really needed. It's almost like it's clarifying language, and you don't generally have clarifying language--
One doesn't have anything to do with the other.
Well, it, it doesn't, it kind of instructs the voters how this works, but the meat of it's in what's above that.
Did the lawyers come up on this?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, none of us are lawyers, so I can't, I can't really speak to that either, I guess.
Well, I'm just saying, based on the research that I've done, Paul, he is a lawyer, so I kind of trusted his judgment from this point. And I know you've got your own attorneys and things that you rely on, but based on the research that we've done on this, both of us on this issue, I think, like Lynn says, if you just drop that last part, I think you'd be fine.
Again, the ballot box, less is more.
Yep.
Well, my concern is someone going in there, I know we can have 10 meetings to try to inform people, and we can put it in the paper, but anybody that goes to vote, or 90% of the people that go to vote are not going to have heard our, our information, and I think it's going to be very confusing no matter what we put there.
Well, and that, again, like Lynn says, if that's one of your concerns, less is better.
Right.
You know, but I can't believe anybody that, once they understand what the purpose of this is, to clean the house up, so to speak.
Right, right.
You'd be shooting yourself in the foot not to approve this article, because you've got work that needs to be done.
Exactly.
You know, and the whole, the whole issue that I had with this is that, if you recall at the beginning, I didn't feel comfortable with 440,000 in a CD and another 175,000 in a savings account at the end of the fiscal year. That should have been, that should have been used. So, I think, like I said, without those last two, I think you got a good, you have a good article here.
What I, I talked to Jay the other, the other night, and what I'd like to do to move this forward is to share it with Paul Gillis, and to get back to Cindy Caneman-Warren, who drafted this, and make sure that what I, what I have here above this, in other words, not including this, make sure that that's adequate for her interests, and once we have that agreement--
Who's Cindy?
Pardon?
Who's Cindy?
She's the attorney that did a lot of our negotiations process this year, works with the legal firm that we use, Lynn Lynn Meniski and, I forget the fourth one, there's another, another partner in there, Blackman, yeah. To be able to have this as a, as a ballot item for November 7th, in addition to the Act 46 ballot item that I'm going to share with you in a minute. I guess what I'm asking the board right now is, what you see there, provided that that's, that's supported by the attorney, are you comfortable with moving forward with that, and possibly coming together on October 4th, taking a quick look at it, and if everything is kosher, that the board then could support and ratify that, that ballot language that then would go to voters no later than October 6th?
I guess the comment I'd kind of follow on what Doug's saying, you know, most of the people when they go to the ballot box and look at this, and they're not going to have any knowledge of what's gone before it. And I don't think it's really clear about, you know, so if you don't approve it, what, you know, what happens is that we essentially don't get to use this money, it just, you know--
Well, what's on us as far as informing voters about what it is?
My guess is if it doesn't get approved, then you let me know if I'm wrong, but it would just revert back to the taxpayers, wouldn't it?
It would. Another possibility is, if you lose those funds, then I would recommend that you incorporate the contemplated retrofits that you're going to use that money for in the bond vote.
I'm just wondering if there's something simple we can add in that language that would kind of let people know, hey, if it doesn't get approved, it's, you know, we don't have access to it, type of thing.
All right, so let me just make a note. Boo, what in, what is not, not passed.
Because I mean, it's all good legal language, but in the end, it's a regular voter looking at it and understanding what it means.
Yeah, good point.
I'm not uncomfortable at all with the representatives of SU Board making the decision.
Yeah, I kind of feel comfortable that we make the decision tonight and just authorize, and you know--
If there are no changes, we don't have to meet.
It's not every meeting that all three can make it, so that's the other problem. But if we can't make it to the meeting, I hope that we could go to their office during the day.
It really needs every board's signature, every board member.
So we have to go to the office on October 5th, or on the 6th?
The 5th would be good.
The 5th?
Yeah, it needs to be posted.
That's what I thought.
Six.
I just need to write it down, or it won't happen.
So, this is for Article 3?
Yes. And it will be Article 1. It will be Article--
Right, the first two on that paper are not going to be, nobody's voting on them. FYI.
And the other decision point tonight, are you comfortable just calling it Capital Renewal--
MBU.
Capital Reserve Fund?
I'd recommend you keep the term reserve in it for clarification purposes.
Absolutely. So this, this would be the new name.
Capital Reserve Fund.
Capital--
Do we have to vote on that?
Um, I think that makes sense, because we get that in the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made by Richard, second by Eric, that I guess our new consolidated fund is going to have a new title and new capitalization.
It was recommended by the attorney to have it something different than any of the other names, so you wouldn't mix it up. I'm sorry it doesn't have 30 words in it. Three's good.
We could spell out MBU. Let's stretch it out.
Okay.
All right, so any other discussion on the, I guess, naming it the Capital Reserve Fund first? All right, hearing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, guys have it, motion carries. So now, I guess, we have to make a decision whether, because we're not going to meet as a group again, hopefully before the 6th, so I guess, do we have a comfort level enough to approve this article?
In its present form.
Well, let me, let me say this, because I want to hedge a little bit. If the attorneys don't agree--
Right.
Then I would ask you to come for a short meeting on the 4th, prior to the SU meeting that starts at 6:30. I think if we came at 6, that probably makes sense.
Well, should we do that anyway then, yeah?
I can't speak for Paul directly, but I'm sure he's going to agree with us.
So let's just say a short meeting at 6 o'clock on October 4, and that meeting you think is here?
I believe so. That's the answer right there.
No, that's not the SU meeting is here, right?
SU meeting is here.
Let me double check.
Yeah, you double check. Somebody--
Last time we were in Sheldon, so wherever it goes after Sheldon.
Sheldon, Swan. All right. If it's at Sheldon, it goes in sequence.
We were at Sheldon.
Yeah, all right, so it goes, it goes Franklin, Highgate, MBU, Sheldon, and Swanton. So this one's at Swan.
So it's PM at Swanton?
Yeah.
Can't argue that.
If this is, if the language changes, though, is someone going to vote for this tonight?
I think, I think just plan to come anyway, and otherwise, we could all sign it that night. I'll let you know.
Because we should have all signatures on it, so--
So you don't need no more motions tonight?
We're not going to-- We'll make that motion on that night, but I hope we have a quorum. Yeah.
Well, maybe on the, that week, send out an email and make sure we have a quorum.
Well, here's the other issue. Why don't we make it this night? If nothing changes, it's good, and if it does change, we'll let you know and plan to come with at least five board members.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. By Richard, second by Mark, that we, we accept this article.
As written?
As written, well, I love if we accept the article with the attorney's, attorney's support.
Pending attorney's support.
Assuming the attorney's support is not going to make it a whole different article. So, all right. And then, we'll have everybody sign. It should be ready by the, before, the 4th must be a Wednesday. So it'll be ready maybe a day or two before that, give people a little bit, so any time that week, maybe, about after Friday. Okay. Any other questions before we vote? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it.
I'd just like to thank the board for clearing it up.
Thank you, Jay, for riding hard on it.
Right. All right. Now, looks like we get right into superintendent stuff.
Yeah, I'm going to go pretty quickly here because I've got an Act 46 ballot language conversation as well. Just to report to the board that the kickoff to the school year, we had a great--
Oh, you're done.
Oh, wait a minute, that could be--
Listen, if you want to stay--
Oh, no, let's, I'll do that later so we can get Becky out here. Let's go to the Act 46.
Oh, she's saying that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's surprising.
Yeah, sorry, Becky. So, the attorney also framed for us ballot language for the Act 46 vote. In essence, the MBU board doesn't have a dog in this fight. You could get bit by it, but you don't have a dog in the fight. The votes happen in Franklin, Highgate, Swanton, and Sheldon, but I just want to let you know where, where the committee is going. And the ballot language is going to be quite similar to what you see here. Let me just roll that up a little bit.
Five paragraphs?
Uh, no, just this last one. Again, less is more. So let's just play this out, that, this is Frank, this is Franklin. Should the Franklin Town School District, with other members of the Franklin Northwest Supervised Reunion, propose an alternative governance structure to the Vermont Agency of Education by January 31st, 2018, that would retain local school boards and local school budgets in each community while achieving the goals of the legislature proposed by Act 46? The proposed alternative governance structure, it's also known as AGS, would include greater elementary school choice opportunities between existing Franklin Northwest schools, maintain tuition-based high school choice in Sheldon, affirm the existing authority of the Supervised Reunion to coordinate curriculum and instruction while clarifying and expanding its authority to share resources and create efficiencies across the member districts with greater Supervised Reunion budget transparency. So that's kind of a mouthful. Initially, there was an option of looking at creating a joint contract board. The first time I read this to Sheldon, remember Jason McConnell's on, on the Act 46 board? He looked at me like I had three eyeballs, and you see what I did to it. I just crossed it out, because we don't need more boards. It's one way of getting it done, but it's an easier way. So, the interpretation of this is, depending on what we hear from community votes of those four towns, on November 7th, it's likely that we'll move forward with an alternative governance structure. There'll be a presentation at the State Board, I found out today, likely in January. And in January, there would be a team of board members from the SU Board that would go to Montpelier and present to the State Board of Ed the fact that we want to remain much as we are now with our local boards, with one exception, and that would be a modified elementary choice option for up to 10 students to move to different elementary schools for different reasons. And tonight's not really about that. Again, you don't have a direct dog in that fight. You already have school choice with five area high schools, called Act 129, where 20 students can go in or go out every year. And that's it, no money changing hands. The difference with, with the elementary option here is, the committee is proposing, and the SU Board would have to make a decision about this on October 4th, make a decision on 50% of the money staying with the existing district, and 50% of the ADM, or Average Daily Membership, going with a child that's going to a different school, all within our, our SU.
So, so is this what the, what the Act 46 committee came up with?
Yep, well, this is what the attorney came up with. The Act 46 committee has looked at it.
We haven't had actually, the committee hasn't actually discussed the article, but having been involved in that, that committee process, I don't see anything that would be objectionable in that article four. My only objection would be the first three articles, I don't agree with those three.
That's preamble.
So if I hear you're not going to use those, present those three, then I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Just a question, I mean, if, if this was the vote on Franklin, why would they care about school choice in Sheldon? Like, why does that, why would that be in here?
Sheldon is high school choice.
Right.
This is elementary choice. So Franklin would care about it, because you could have 10, and again, we talked about 10 per year, and we talked about 10 at any one time, so it could mean that 10 students could come to Franklin from other school districts. Or, like, it could go the other way, 10 students could go from Franklin to either Highgate, Swanton, or Sheldon.
So this don't have nothing to do with us, the MBU?
Correct. I just want you to know--
So, just elementary, not middle school, because there's that whole--
No, it's middle school as well.
Okay.
So it means that Sheldon 7th and 8th graders could come here, or MBU 7th and 8th graders could go to Sheldon.
Do we need to put that language in there with the middle school piece?
Oh, good point. Does it say elementary?
Just elementary.
Elementary, middle, good. Good point. In some of the other iterations, we had that in there, but this one didn't.
But it says, okay, maintain tuition-based high school choice in Sheldon.
This is a proposal for the, for the district, for the SU, so every town has to vote on this structure for the SU.
Because it's from the Act 46 committee--
Committee.
--to bring the recommendation to the Agency of Ed.
Right, and the ballot item's going to be the same in every one of the communities.
We have to have the voting for the data.
What's that?
We have to have the voting for the data to give to the Agency of Ed.
The SU Board will--
Yes.
This is going to be part--
Right, you don't say--
Right, this is going to be part of the, the argument, but part of the proposal to the Agency.
Right, and so I, I'm just, out of courtesy and respect, want you to know what your brethren and the sister-in-boards are up to, because it does have some impact on you here. Because the other, the other option, voters who support this are going to give up four years of tax savings. And so in the information components, they need to know that if we merged, there could be four years of tax savings. And the recommendation of the committee is not to do that. And you'll see from the 70-some-odd-page report that there's not that much benefit financially in making that move, and one of the districts could be financially hurt. and one of the districts could be financially hurt considerably with, with higher tax rates. So.
And the state does not have to approve this plan to begin with, right?
Yeah, they do.
They do.
Yeah.
No, I mean, they don't, they have to approve ours. If we, if we submit it, then the state has to accept it and just fine us essentially.
No, and.
Well, if you raise taxes, that's, I call that a fine.
That's true, but they also can merge us.
That's, that's what I see.
Okay.
So they don't now have to accept what we.
Correct.
Give them, they can accept the data.
That's right.
They don't have to accept what that data.
Right. So we, we need to be convincing in, in our presentation. And then they have the due diligence and the authority to do as they see fit in fulfillment of the five goals of Act 46.
With that said, having had the good fortune of participating on virtually all of those Act 46 study committee meetings, I'm really impressed with the plan that the committee's come up with. Because they've made it a point to not simply present a plan to the state that's, that says that, well, no, we're not merging, we're just going to keep doing what we've been doing right along. So there's a lot of language in there that describes the enhancements that the alternative governance structure is including. For example, they, when I had this discussion last meeting, I think it was in Sheldon with regards to the issue on school choice for preschool or the lower grades. And just as an example, there's a commit, there's a recommendation in there to create a educational resource team, which will meet prior to the start of the school year to assess the educational opportunities that exist within the Franklin Northwest Supervised Reunion and to enter into agreements whereby, for example, Sheldon middle schoolers could come to MBU and participate in foreign language classes because they don't have that in Sheldon right now. And vice versa, if there was something that was happening in Sheldon that the MBU 7th and 8th graders would benefit from, then this team would be able to make some kind of a joint agreement where that could happen in a, in a way that wouldn't impact you financially. So. There's a lot of really good stuff in that, in that proposal. And the committee worked really hard, covered a lot of ground, and tried to create, to create enhancements that would specifically meet the requirements of Act 46 or exceed them.
We haven't exactly figured out the mantra yet, but it's something akin to, you know how global businesses have a mantra of think globally, act locally? We're trying to figure out what we might say, but it's more like think, think globally, act globally. In other words, we operate as if we're a single district because we can move students around to different schools. We already moved staff around to different schools, both within and outside our SU. So if it looks like and acts like a single SD and still retains the autonomy of local boards, then I think it's going to be harder for the state board to say, thou shalt have a single board. And that's really the difference. And that's one of the reasons that we have really looked at that without any implicit bias. In other words, looked at and did the due diligence, regardless of the opinions of where board members wanted to go, looked at it from the data that's merged and you'll see, and again, that report continues to morph and to change based on lots of variables. But we'll have that for you, for the SU board members, we'll have that prior to the October 4th meeting. That'll be going out next week. And it's not final, final form because it will become final after the votes and we hear feedback from communities. Communities could say, we want you to merge. And then, then the, the Act 46 committee's going to have to go back to the well. But I found out today from the Secretary of Ed is the state board is going to be very busy in November and December with the mergers that are coming before them. Apparently, they authorized some more mergers yesterday. So it's, it's likely to be January, which is exactly what we wanted it to be. That way, we can process what voters say on November 7th and be able to come back and send to the state board a month before we present to them what our final disposition will be. So this is more just a discussion. I'm not really asking for board support here. I just want you to know what the, what your colleagues are doing at the local level and what the committee's been working on for about a year and a half here. Okay?
Is that why we kept Becky?
Uh, yeah, just to, she's, she's the queen of ballot language.
Because everybody likes it.
Yeah. So I think unless you want to abuse Becky anymore, I think she can probably go.
That's her heart.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Becky.
We can just sort of work from here.
Close up, yeah.
All right, let me, let me just go back to the superintendent's report for a minute. The wrapping up the resiliency in adverse childhood experiences. The ACES is a national program doctors have been using it all over the country. Long and the short of that is it's an assessment that parents can take and if they answered three or more of like 14 questions, then there's likely their children have experienced trauma. And schools are, are using this. The movie that we watched, an hour-long movie, was about resilience and kind of naming what resilience is, helping children to become more resilient and putting in place systems that, that help children that are products of trauma be successful in schools. And that's what we're working on. I'm going to throw this out. I don't feel strongly about this, but what I will say is, I've heard some board members say, we wonder if, because a lot of action is happening at the SU board, if we need to meet as often with local boards. And if we, we're going to move in that direction, and Swanton did. Swanton set up a schedule of meeting every six weeks. And other boards, we, I've had a initial conversation with them about that. You could consider that too. While I think it makes a difference, if we can say to the state board, part of our Act 46 process is we are centralizing a lot of our decision-making, yet we're still keeping a good deal of that viable at the local level. The question is, we can set in place a process that maintains our ability to pay bills every 30 days or less with directing power to a subcommittee to do the work that John and the finance committee's been doing for quite a while now and be able to come together as a full board not as often. And so I'm not going to ask you to make a decision about that tonight. I'm just going to plant a seed and ask you to consider that. I'm also going to share with you tonight, and I wish I should have asked Jay the person's name. We have through NCSS, which is the mental health agency, we have a drug and alcohol counselor in the school a day a week and we could have them up to three days a week, absolutely free and provided by NCSS, Northwest Counseling and Support Service. And we also have a full-time NCSS truancy specialist. Our, our attendance rates are 84 to 86% on any given day as an annual average. And that's lower than it needs to be, lower than it should be. Our elementary schools have about 95 to 96% attendance rates. Kids have to be in school in order to learn. And there's learning that can happen outside of school through online, but truancy is an issue. So NCSS has created a position for us. It's part of our MOL team. It's part of how we've, we've created the needs-based focus using the former principal's salary to be able to expand a team in a, in a direction that we feel it needs to go. So I'm just sharing with you now that, that those are a couple of positions. We actually do pay $43,000 for that position. NCSS pays the other half of that position through Medicaid reimbursement. So we have a position that is half paid for by NCSS and half paid for through existing administrative funds.
When, as far as truancy, do you guys still have excused and unexcused absences or just an absence and absence?
It varies a little bit between schools. It's excused and unexcused, and there's some nuance in there that I don't know as much about. I certainly can find that out. Is there a point you'd like me to do some research on?
When we were in school, if you had so many unexcused absences, you were suspended.
Okay.
And those were, and then you got so many unexcused abs, and then if you get suspended as unexcused absence and then after a while, you were just done.
Yeah.
See, there's, there's, if there's none of, no, they're not reprimanded for not coming to class, then there's no incentive to show up every day.
Well, okay, I see where you're going. When I was an assistant principal, I had students that knew how to push those buttons. And here's an easy way to get a day off from school, just fool around a little bit and out you go. What we're trying to do is hold kids accountable and not suspend them for not being in school in the first place, but meet with their family, find out what the issue for why they're not in school. You know, are there learning deficiencies? Are there other kinds of issues? And that's what this truancy specialist is about, developing relationships with families, doing home visits, finding out why this student is not in, in school. Kids generally like to go to school unless some bad things are happening. Either they're getting bullied, maybe they don't have the learning skills that they need, and that's what that, that person's about. So we'll see how it goes. But appreciate the feedback. On November 7th vote, we've talked about it, contracts. We have hired Julie Curtis. You might remember that the school improvement grant instructional coach was hired until a week before school started and she had to leave. We've opened that back up. Julie Curtis is an outstanding teacher that we, we've had for a number of years here, social studies. She is hired now as the instructional coach. And the replacement teacher is Kaylee Oldham that we've hired. And the new math intervention is Ian Junior. Put on the October board agenda, track and field repair, and the Ag Activity Director update. And we're continuing to pursue that. That was a directive at the last board meeting. You ready for new business?
I think, unless we've got questions about old business.
Okay, one question. Has all of the school improvement grant money been allocated?
Me to other schools?
No, no, I mean the, the one that MBU received, school improvement grant.
I don't know if it just paid for the SIG instructional coach or not. I guess I'd have to check on that.
But is your school improvement team here that's working on a continuous improvement plan, got access to that?
Access to the money?
Or is there a method where they can access that to enhance their work?
I think so. And again, Jay, I don't, I don't want to say something that might not be true.
Just a question.
If I were in Montpelier and I was a politician, I could do that, but I can't do it here. I'll, I'll check, because I don't know. I'm asking that you change the October 19th board meeting to October 18th. The state school boards and superintendents conference at Lake Maury is on the 19th and 20th. I will be there representing you, voting on visbit health insurance and attending some of the sessions. Don Collins is there as a board member for the Vermont School Boards Association. And I would invite any, any of the other of, not only board members here, but any of the other schools to attend. It's always a very good conference and it's specifically focused on leadership teams of school board members, superintendents, some principals, curriculum coordinators, and special ed directors.
Will the library be available because it's middle school conferences?
I believe so. I think I knew that they were double booked and I think that's an okay time for us to be here anyway.
Yeah, I think so too.
The board's here when parents are here and that's always a good thing. So you want to do that as a formal motion?
All right, we can do that. Do I have the motion to change the October meeting from the 19th to the 18th?
I'll make that.
Seconded by Vicky, seconded by Meyer. Any discussion, further discussion on that?
I just want to say I won't be here because I already have a conference for church in Pennsylvania. If we change the dates.
Wouldn't you agree the date?
Wait, Vicky, did you say middle school night is here? It's not a problem because.
Oh, we're in Franklin.
Right, we're in Franklin.
Right, we're not going to change the, the date.
Perfect.
Remember, when we did goals, you said you'd like us to move the, the location around, so I'm starting the circuit.
Let me add that into the motion then. We'll change it from, from MBU on the 19th to Franklin on the 18th. That's a pretty important detail.
My name is Kennedy, I'll be at 6:00 in the board.
5:45 will be facilities committee. 6:15 will be finance committee. And 7:00 will be the board meeting.
And I'll be right in the library.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other further discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Allo.
And we've been very nice to Franklin because we're going to meet in your, in your hometown. Now we need to replace Vicky Bratton. Vicky, do you want to, you want to share? It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm officially an Act 166 educator, which Act 66 is the preschool, the pre-K team with the district. So I'm teaming with a district teacher to teach preschool in my home registered childcare.
And that's a potential conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And so it has no relevance to Vicky's role here on MBU, but it does as a representative on the SU board.
So like I said earlier, historically, we try to keep, you know, a, a member from Highgate, a member from Swanton, a member from Franklin on the SU board. I'm sure it hasn't always been that way, but we've always tried to do that. So if there are, if there is a Franklin member with interest, then we look to them first.
You see your side of his face.
Yeah, I see a lot of, I see a lot of no yeses.
What's his name?
Does that make him a mute?
So we do, I think we do have to appoint someone tonight. So, I mean, all you have to do is say no and we can still appoint you back. But either, you know, John has all kinds of time on his hands too. They're actually, you know, I've, I've been on there for a few years now and they're actually pretty good.
They're very informative.
They're pretty good meetings to go to. They always have food and drinks at their meetings.
Yes.
Soft drinks. Just to clarify.
Oh, there's no beer.
Yeah.
Maybe something to think about though.
It's a good topic.
Well, if there's going to be a lot of heming and hogging, is there anybody else in the room that would really enjoy doing it? Greg's been there plenty. Rob's, Rob would like to run the show, he was there. Trying to think now, pardon?
Who are the other two right now?
Myself and Don. And trying to think who would be, well, we have a new committee next year, but I'm trying to think who's the next school to chair that board.
Highgate right now?
It's at Highgate right now because Nola chairs it.
Yeah, I don't remember now. Maybe Franklin will be in next year. Anyways. So we can flip a coin? Arm wrestle?
Or who's not here?
Who's not here? Well, the Franklin ones are all here. So if you're going to go there, but, yeah, I don't hear anybody jumping right in, so. Don is the only one that wasn't here.
It's the first Wednesday of each month, starts at 6:30. We don't actually go that long, usually.
No.
Last time we.
You're helping.
I know, sorry. But there was Sackaweb, which was a superintendent search.
Yeah.
And Act 46.
Act 46 is going to be a couple more meetings of discussion. So. We'll start at that.
Nominate John.
Perfect, perfect. We have a second. Do we have a second?
He earned a name tag with that one.
Mark, did you second that?
Well, it's mostly just time.
Right, right.
I wouldn't want to take it off later and then I'd be a show.
Right. No, if you say no, then we'll move down the row.
I promised I wouldn't take anything else on, because there's so many boards for the DICEs and globally, but also the first Wednesday is Destry, and that's my first priority.
So that means we could have the board meetings at the church.
Yeah, at the church.
What's that?
One of you take that.
I think you should take that in the question, John.
I do see Eric fitting one of the-
Yeah, of course. Doesn't say it.
No, no, no. John's been on this board quite some time. Have you ever been on the SU Board, John?
I have to talk to friends.
Mike, even the cocoa buns, try it, you'll like it.
This is a lot tougher than I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to get, jumping up and down, "Pick me, pick me."
This should have talked about it a little sooner.
Then you wouldn't have been here, then you wouldn't have been here tonight if we talked about it before.
Then you could have, those decisions could have pointed.
I at least find it informational because of the central office budget piece, especially at tax, I mean, not tax, it's town meeting time, because that seems to ask, people ask a lot of questions about that.
Well, I don't know, maybe it doesn't make any difference. How would it be if you both went to the next meeting on the 4th, and then we decide after that? You know, if you see how much fun it is, how good the cookies are.
That's fair.
Here's an idea.
Good negotiation.
They're tough, they're tough to knock. They've got good cookies.
That'd be better.
Maybe put a little A-plus on that.
They won't be sanctioned, but, I mean, I think for one meeting, if we go without one, it's, I thought of that, did you, Jay? All right, let's try that. That way, you'll both get a, it's easier if you have done it.
Do you vote, I mean, this is-
Yeah, you won't be able to vote.
No, I'm saying as far as, like, you know, so the quorum, is it, you have to have similar rules, right?
Yeah, it's the same, it's a bigger, there's fifteen board members here on that board. So actually, either they'll have to split, well, they can't split a vote. So one person will have to decide who's going to vote.
Well, it won't matter, just be down one vote. It'll just be as if someone wasn't there.
All right. And this is, I was asking for a trial.
Yeah, this is an investment.
Okay.
It's going to cost us some cookies, but, yeah.
All right.
And thank you, Vicki.
Yes.
Yes.
And congratulations on your new position.
Yeah, going crazy. There'd be a lot more appreciation for teachers in home.
What's, does anybody know what the topics are going to be on the next meeting?
For MBU or for the-
The SU.
Yes. It will be superintendent search, it will be an Act 46 vote, the ballot that we looked at, the board will make a decision on moving that forward. I can tell you some other agendas. It will be, we're going to talk a bit about busing, and you need to authorize a visbit proxy vote for myself at Lake Maury. I'll tell you more about that. Each SU has a vote on issues that come before the healthcare, the Vermont School Boards Insurance Trucks, healthcare, insurance, those kinds of things. And you'll have a decision about a contract issue for an SU employee. So there'll be some-
All right, I'll do it.
Pardon?
I'll do it.
All right.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Eric as our new SU representative. Do I have that motion?
Oh, my God, motion.
Motion by Richard, seconded by Mark.
I thought John was going to second.
I was thinking about that in the last six-week, you had two each.
I know, I'm going to give him the first one.
Yeah, I guess that would be for the grader of the year, well, until town meeting.
Town meeting day, yes.
Oh, well, you didn't say, I just said, yes, right off.
Yeah, for life. So all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Eric. We are just about done. We have a very short executive session. Yep, one topic.
And the every-six-week possibility, we just put that into the ruminating mode?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you all. Well, thank you, Bree. Very nice to have you here.
I would entertain more, thank you.
Is there any track and leave?
Bree made the motion, Richard made the motion, Mark seconded. All in favor of entering executive session, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Nice habit, we're in executive session at 9:47.